Good evening, everyone. The time is now six P M. And the Spring Lake Board of Commissioners work session meeting is now called to order. I do ask that you please silence your cell phones and keep all sidebar conversations to the minimum. I would like to begin by calling Pastor Morris to the podium to lead us in our pledge of allegiance and invitation. Please stand and join us if you choose to.
I always know backwards. Well, Lord, we just thank you. We know there's a lot of things happening in our country in these moments. And there's one constant, Lord, and that's you. And we turn and set our eyes and our heart on you today and ask your blessing upon not only this meeting, Lord, but this town. And just such a great way as we follow you, Lord, and the ways that you lead us, Lord, I know blessings will come after. So I'm asking you to bless our leadership, our town leadership, our mayor, our board, everyone, Lord, that puts their hand to the cloud to make this a good place for people. Lord, just send your blessings down upon the meeting tonight, Lord. Just let your will be done in this place. We thank you for it tonight in Jesus' name. Goodbye.
Our pleasure to be here today in the United States of America and in the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Pastor Morris. He is Pastor Liquid Water. What's the address?
Twenty forty North Red.
There you go.
Yeah.
Okay, we will now move on to our additions and deletions. Mayor President?
Yes.
Um, I wanted to, uh, we're going to take one discussion. And making sure we recognize our town manager is not here tonight. He is ill. Um, and we want to make sure we keep a liquid of an autopsy as he heals from whatever keeping him from here. He is not here. He must be really, really sick today. Are there any other additions or deletions? I don't know. I'm just seeing a motion to approve the agenda. Richard Bosco?
So moved.
Richard Johnson? I second. Any discussion? All in favor? Uh, just motion carries. A knockoff approval of the consent items, draft minutes of the September eighth right there meeting, the FAMCO will then random, the M U will remember understanding. And resolution twenty twenty five twelve, resolution declaring surplus of personal property. Commissioner, uh, excuse me, Mayor President?
So moved.
Richard Tapper?
I second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Hockman?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just on the resolution twenty twenty five twelve on the clearing of the personal property. That's, that's whoever's doing that, I appreciate that, Chief Williams. That, that's, that's great because getting rid of this junk, this surplus of individuals around here for a while. It gets good and the streets build up more. So, so let me get everyone involved.
Awesome. Making sure we can think of plenty. All in favor? All in motion carries. Uh, we'll now move on to public comments. Now, as the experts introduce the televisions above, that won't dictate your time that you have. Please keep your comments under three minutes. And the board will not be able to reply to comments or questions during this period. We will begin with Ms. Juanita Bonds of the forum. And please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Juanita Bonds. I live at fourteen twenty three Milton Street. Uh, I am coming to you, uh, to address the forum we're having September twenty seventh here at the rec center from eleven to one. And the first hour is going to be the mayors and the next is the commissioners. Also, on my web, on my Facebook page, there's a link where you can ask questions. So Juanita Bonds, look it up. And, um, uh, I think that's it. Okay, so I have, I, I, I'm very upset. I was looking at City View. Let me pull it up. And, um, looking at we're behind in our auditing and has not been addressed to the residents of our town. So let me get it. Okay, um, yes, okay. So we've been, okay. The state is sanctioning the Spring Lake government because the town has not submitted annual audits for the past three fiscal years to the North Carolina Local Government Commission. The local government commission voted last week to withhold small amounts of sales tax revenue from Spring Lake and ten other municipalities for not turning in their audits by the deadline, October thirty first. The commission withheld up to a hundred and fifty percent of what a town paid for its page for its last completed audit. This town spent thirty seven thousand five hundred dollars for Spring Lake out of an estimate one point seven six million that the town expects to receive in sales tax this fiscal year. Okay, let me go to, um, the part where, um, okay, the mayor is addressing this. Okay. Uh, the state is sanctioning the Spring Lake because the town has not submitted annual audits for the past three fiscal years to the North Carolina. Oh, are we sitting there? Okay, the local government commission voted on September the ninth to withhold small amounts. And I said, I mean, two. Okay, let me go to Spring Lake Mayor Kia Anthony told City View that the town staff is working to complete the charity audits. She expects them to be submitted by the end of the year. The local government commission oversees the finances of city, town, and county governments. And the state treasurer is the commission's chair. The commission took control of Spring Lake's finances October twenty twenty one following years of troubles and corruption, including a financial director who invested, they also narrowed it fifty five hundred seventy five thousand. But this is what I wanted to, okay. The twenty twenty two audit and subsequent audits were handled by the lack of reliable figures to start with from twenty twenty one, Anthony said. Uh, with data for twenty twenty one in hand, Anthony said, the town has been working on its audits for twenty twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four as well as this year. Uh, so.
Okay, how did you finish?
Okay, so I'm finished, but, okay. We're paying the county manager a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You're getting quite a bit of clarification for it, okay? And the financial director a hundred and twenty five thousand. I want to know what they're doing.
Okay.
Why I would be hiding my, so, okay, thank you.
Sean Riedner, Cub Scouts?
Hi there.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sean Riedner. I live at fourteen seventeen Max Street. Um, I'm here on two boards. First off, I'm here on the board of, um, Cub Scouts in our area have been on a, have been on a rebound since COVID. A lot of the packs have shut down. However, our package in Anderson Creek is steadily growing, but we do need more from this whole area. Um, last year, I think I was my younger, my older son, I was the only one from the kindergarten. Now he's in first grade. And right now Tobias is the only one from, um, my other son from kindergarten right now. Um, I would like to prove that out with, um, it might seem expensive. There are tons of ways to have it paid, whether that is, uh, one thing about Cub Scout, they say that they've worked their way. Uh, we've been out there tracking supply setting the popcorn donations. My son has already raised six hundred bucks. That's going to cover his going to camp, his dues, all of this stuff. Um, you know, the pack can help out with uniforms and all that. So I'd really like that we could have some way, um, for the involvement to get younger kids involved in this thing that people can help, you know, foster this great partnership. Um, I'm also here on the role, aside from that, um, I'm also here on the role of my job. I'm a facility compliance specialist at Stanford Collection Center, um, a, a state facility for the Department of Adult Collection. Um, something about that again is community outreach. Um, community outreach at, um, Sanford, um, obviously thirty minutes away. Church, it can volunteer as far as, um, we, we deal with reentry now, not reset. We look at getting people to set for reentry. And for that, we need community support also. Um, we need support for as far as, um, people being community volunteers to take some of these people that want to have weekend passage to the church, out to churches. Um, and without that knowledge, you're saying some people you maybe want to say, I want to take them to the church. You're not, they're, they're a particular offender who started to get out. They want them to have that opportunity to go and do all these things to help them reenter society. Um, community resource council as far as getting involved with some of the things that, um, connect the citizens and the local areas to these offenders who are going to be, to be just as involved individuals who are going to be getting counseling. Um, to get the outreach about that out too. So I know I'm kind of talking on two different fronts, but, um, it's all about the community involvement program that could really nurture from having community involvement areas that are really close by. Without the biggest state of seventy year, people don't really know what all happens. Uh, but if anybody wants to reach out to me, I have business cards, I can talk to you about it. If anybody wants to try to set up a way that we can try to get more younger kids into scouting, you can also reach me.
Thank you. Could you please leave your contact for the course? Thank you. I am going to, please excuse me for not being reading, but I believe blessing is average.
Yeah, yeah, that's. I'm sorry.
John?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, I got it. We write somewhere, just took me a second.
I, I just happened to talk to my neighbor, just to know if y'all like that.
I'm sorry, could you state your name and address for the record?
One oh seven North Sixth Street, Spring Lake, North Carolina.
Thank you.
I'm from Alabama, Michigan. And I, I live on right off Spring Avenue. Now, I, I just want to address, I, I want to say first, I talked to my neighbor, just to know. I don't know if you know him. He's seven, three years old, I think. I'm seven. But, uh, I live out of him, he needs some lights, because it's pretty dark. I live right across from here. So that, that's all, that's, that's one street light, one street light.
Can you tell me your address again?
One oh seven North Sixth Street, Spring Lake, North Carolina. Uh, right off Spring Avenue. That's all.
Thank you.
Yeah. Kind of flat, don't it?
I don't make shit, I mean, life. So I hit eighteen hours.
Okay, you say Sanford?
Yes. Yes, I'm, this is Sanford. And I live at one oh four, walkin' drive, right here at Spring Lake. And I can walk in there. And I can go home. Anyway, I've been saying this and I'm not, I'm not going to stop saying it. I want those signs up for the children. I want those poles repaired. There's one on eighty seven, I mean that thing. I think of an input could knock that thing right on down. And that needs to be fixed. And the one right there on Main Street. You know, these things need to be repaired because if something happens, it's on you. Okay? And the other thing is, is the roads. Every time when it rains, you can't even see the lines in the road. And that's dangerous because you got these big old trucks and stuff like that. And you need to be able to know that you're in the right lane and not venture over somewhere else. And the last thing I have to say is, you need to get some type of thing for people that drive trucks, local trucks and all these other trucks that drive around here. They don't have a cover on these things. My, my cars been hit three times. Not, no, nothing was broken, it just happens to be, you know, paper, box, stuff like that. But you find people driving with these trucks and they have these, uh, poles and things all on the, on the, on the back of the truck. The, the wind can get up under it and it can zoom right into your car. I've seen those things happen. We need to get something done about that. Okay? All right. Got one minute. I love you.
Steven Carew? Please state your name and address for the record.
Hey, yes, I'm Steve Carew. I have a home at five eleven Eva Circle. I'm, uh, I've got to tone it down a little bit. Uh, so I'm just here to, um, sort of market a new business I have. It's a pressure washing business. So, uh, a little bit about me, I grew up, uh, most of my life in Spring Lake, well, I'm not current. But later on, I went to the Navy and, uh, I was an intelligence specialist at Rockford, Tennessee, D C. And now I'm back. And as I'm settling down, I'd just like to, um, just sort of solicit my business. It's a pressure washing business as previously stated. Um, the name of it is At the Hill Pressure Washing, which focuses on home exterior washing, uh, driveways and walkway cleanings, and in addition to fix fences, decks, and patios, and vital signing, um, clean. And, uh, the motto of the company is always try to show your best in everything. Um, so thank you for your time and, uh, I, I'll be here more to come.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Can you leave your contact information for the board?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. All right, we'll continue on with our presentations. And we have a focus group three, I think, Mayor President?
Yeah. So focus group three, um, we met and some of the things we talked about was partnering, um, with the recreation department to boost youth engagement, uh, recruit citizens, volunteers, and champions to help with, um, some, some of the blight. And, uh, explore A D U's, county houses, and container homes for affordability. And, uh, A D U is an accessory dwelling unit. And, you know, there are a lot of people who, there are a lot of eligibility, um, in our community or people who want to still have their, um, privacy, but, uh, be close by. Or like if you have a child, a grown child who wants, uh, more freedom and, but they still need to stay home, you can have A D U in your backyard, um, for that person. Um, like I have a classmate whose grown son has autism. He lives in an A D U. So that way he, there's no stove, but there's a microwave. And that way he's allowed to have some type of privacy and freedom. So, um, but they're also affordable because let's be real, the, the pay around here is not going to, most people are not going to be able to buy a two, three hundred thousand dollar home, um, around here. So that's why we talk about A D U's, tiny homes and container homes. And, um, we discussed considering solar energy for cost savings. Um, there are some barriers to that because of the military and all the planes, but we'll see how we can, um, use that. And, uh, we plan to try to demolish sixteen properties, four in each quadrant of the community. Um, these are blighted homes. And what we want to do is give them to, uh, give the land, um, to a nonprofit or maybe a church that's doing some redevelopment. And they have, you know, they have to promise to build, um, housing for, um, a certain income gap. And the feature you see is for the community walks where we would go. We have about twenty people groups of three, and we will walk through a community. Um, if you get a yellow door anchor, you're doing well. And we hope to have, uh, the town, um, a, a skin code to get the app on it where you can tell people how to get on your, um, on your, on the walk. If you get a yellow, you have a minor code violation. When you get a red, there's a lot of things going on that we're going to talk to you about fixing. Because we feel like a lot of times people don't know that they shouldn't have this or they don't know that, um, they need a cover of card that's not registered. So, uh, that was one of the things and we'll do it every quarter. And on September twenty third, which is tomorrow, we're going to be updating our ordinance matrix, uh, which says what can be built here. Because that's a little idea. And so I decided that we needed to hurry up and get on that. So we need to, we're going to work on that tomorrow.
And that's it. If this focus group three is, is coming along, this is a, a, a near and dear area. Of course, everybody's concerned about cleaning up Spring Lake. Um, I know Commissioner Hockman is super excited about making sure Spring Lake is clean. Um, I did have a question about the properties, the sixteen properties. Why are we doing, um, sixteen properties annually? Is there wanting to do more or sixteen kind of where? I question.
Well, because of, um, financial constraints, we can only manage to do at the most sixteen because there is a cost to tearing down a lot of property. And of course, we're limited in funds.
Are there any questions from the board? Thank you. Uh, Mayor President? We will now move on to, uh, our new business agenda item eight. A company income tax collection report twenty twenty four. Mr. Overton?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, you have in your agenda package the annual report from the Cumberland County Tax Office that shows, uh, the amount of property taxes they collected for us this year. The report also includes, uh, the solid waste fees and the sanitation revenues that the county collects for us. Okay? Uh, this is a summary of our, just the property taxes. The total letting for the past year was three million one hundred sixty seven thousand dollars. The county has collected three million one hundred fifty three thousand. They've collected all of the thirteen thousand six hundred dollars. So our collection percentage for last year is, um, that should be ninety nine point five seven, not nine oh five. I'm sorry. That's ninety nine.
That's it.
Got it. Got it. All right. That, that's the good news now. We're going to, uh, as far as your, your general fund, we have made just about all of the adjustments for receivables and payables for the fiscal year ended twenty five. Um, we do have a question regarding the sales tax, uh, agreement, the fifty percent in excess of prior year. The county hasn't billed us for that, so we've estimated that, but I'm pretty sure it's pretty close. But that may change a little bit. But other than that, all adjustments for twenty five are done. Okay? This is a summary of our general fund balance for the last five years. And you see in two thousand twenty one, our unsigned fund balance, that is the amount of fund balance that you can spend however you choose. There are no restrictions on it. Unfortunately, in two thousand twenty one, that number was negative one point five million. Okay? Um, and that's, and that is nineteen point seven four percent of your expenses. Okay? That represents about two and a half months' worth of expenses we were in the hole. Okay? In two thousand twenty one, that is when the local government commission took over the town in October of twenty one. Okay? Uh, the next year, our fund balance did improve substantially. Uh, it was only half a million dollars negative or nine percent. That's roughly one, one month's expense in the hole. Okay? Uh, then you see the next three years, our unassigned fund balance improved substantially. In twenty three, it was twenty four percent, which is roughly equal to about three months' worth of expenses. In twenty four, it was equal to twenty six, again, about three months' worth of expenses. Uh, this current year, our unassigned fund balance is two point six million or thirty four percent. Uh, Mr. Rory had said he wanted to set a goal of thirty five percent. We're all on the same. So we have made a vast improvement in our fund balance over the last several years. Now, this is the table where all those numbers, kind of that graph came from. I'm not going to go over it, but that's, uh, the detail behind that graph. Okay? Now, let's start back with the cash in twenty one. Remember I told you a couple meetings ago that all we had in general fund in twenty one was petty cash of two hundred twenty five thousand dollars, I mean, two hundred twenty five dollars. Okay? Our actual cash in general, in the checking account at that time was negative three hundred sixty thousand in the general fund.
That's a lot less than two hundred twenty five.
Yeah. That two twenty five is what was in the petty cash box that they used to make change with when they made a water fund.
Oh.
That was all the cash we had in twenty one.
Oh.
There was the cash that they made change with. Okay? The cash in the checking in the general fund was three hundred sixty thousand negative. But the problem is that we should have had seven hundred twenty six thousand of money restricted. At the end of twenty one, our pile bill report showed that we had five hundred twelve thousand unspent pile bill funds. We also required to set aside one year's payment on a rec center, I think, with a hundred thirty one thousand, supposed to be in savings. Also, we received the first payment from the county gave us a grant to pay the debt service on the new Manchester Fire Station of eighty two. So all of that money, seven hundred twenty six thousand, should have been in the general fund and been restricted. So the general fund had to borrow seven hundred twenty six thousand plus three hundred sixty thousand from the water fund. So our actual cash in the general fund, or the amount the general fund owed the water fund to cover all this restricted cash was one million eight seven thousand dollars. Now, the fund balance I showed you was negative a million four. That's your negative cash of one million plus your four hundred thousand liabilities equals your one point five negative fund balance. That is what you inherited four years ago. Okay? Now, this is the cash for the last five years. And you see the cash has gradually gone up each year. The current year, the general fund has five million of cash. Now, uh, L G C took over control in October of twenty one because of, uh, the town had borrowed money without their permission. Uh, there was the, uh, embezzlement by a former finance officer and also, but because we had built the cash back up, last year on July the ninth, they returned control back to the board. Okay? Now, now, how did we get from a million four in the hole to five million? Well, during this time, most of this time, the local government commission was getting control of the town. The way that they built the cash back up was by delaying spending on just about everything. Uh, we postponed just about all capital outlay, did not replace any vehicles or equipment. Uh, cut repairs and maintenance to the bare minimum. Okay? They also piled bill. We get three hundred thousand dollars a year for pile bill that can only be used to repair the streets. We spent next to nothing in the last four years. We have finally started paying that this year. Uh, as a result, there were potholes in town big enough to bury my trucks in it. Uh, but we are seeing that. We fixed potholes behind, um, Zaxby's. Uh, we now currently working on Hedmore Circle. That's about finished. They paid, they've paid several other streets in town, but we've got a few more to go. But we're finally, uh, working on all of those streets that are, where we did not repair those over the last four years. The other thing the L G C did was say since they didn't approve the Spring Lake property acquisition loan, they told the town we can't pay it. So we defaulted on three and a half million dollar loan. When you don't pay your loan back, your cash goes back up, but that's another good way to do it. Um, also, uh, we did not maintain the buildings that were on all that property we purchased. And so they fell into a state of misrepair and they were eventually all addealed by Cumberland County. And then we also, the, uh, L G C just said, uh, just pretend Spring Lake property acquisitions doesn't exist because they didn't approve it. So it became an illegal trash dump. Now we have to pay to clean it up thanks to Mr., um, Black. Thanks to Mr. Lachman and his volunteers, uh, they have cleaned up. What about a hundred thousand pounds of trash?
Ninety nine thousand pounds of trash.
Most of which came off this property, or a big portion of it came off the property. Uh, because we have not submitted our audits, the LGC would not let us borrow money. Therefore, we couldn't replace the lease cards, so we had to lease fifteen of them instead of buying them on state contract. Now, that helps your cash flow, but the actual price of those power of state contract is cheaper than what we leased them from Mira Prize. Okay, um, also, we received some grant funds to, for Veterans Park and for, um, Munster Park and, uh, some other grant funds. Those, those grant funds sat in the checking account for a couple, last three years and were, no progress was made on it. This year, we're finally starting to spend that money. It did our little bit of interest, but the projects that could have been completed, uh, were delayed because the LGC wouldn't appropriate the money. Uh, the other way we saved money was we transferred the rec department, uh, management to Cumberland County and the city of Fayetteville. And in order to fix all of the, uh, errors and, uh, the books, one of the reasons the books were in terrible shape in twenty one, they were in such bad shape, the LGC waived the audit, uh, report for that year. So they hired a firm, Rig Isley, to correct and fix those books for the last several years, reconcile the bank accounts. That cost the town one point six million dollars is what we paid that accounting firm to fix all the arrows from those prior years. Well, and I'm gonna say, could fix some of those arrows from the prior years, not all of them.
I'm sorry for speaking out of turn, the whole time they were here, that was one point six million total.
Yes, that is expensive. Okay, now, now for the good news. Remember, we borrowed three and a half million dollars for Spring Lake property acquisitions to purchase a hundred and sixty arrows of land. Okay, uh, and then we defaulted on it, did not make any payments. There was three hundred thousand left in the escrow account at December of twenty one. BB and T closed the escrow account, paid the accrued interest and then applied the remaining three hundred thousand in principal. So you had a balance of three point one million at the end of December of twenty one. About three week, three weeks ago, the town purchased that mortgage note from Truist Bank for four hundred fifty thousand. We used two hundred fifty six to pay off the accrued interest for the last four years that had not been paid. That left a balance of a hundred ninety three thousand that we could apply to the three, three million dollar loan. After you take that, we have a, the balance was two point nine million. Truist has sold us that note for four hundred fifty thousand and forgiven the other three million. So the current balance on that loan right now is zero. So we, that is one problem that has been solved. Okay, are there any questions?
Can you go back to the, the Spring Lake property acquisitions or the new deals?
That is how we built the fund balance up. But what that means is a whole lot of repairs, maintenance and equipment replacement has, has been delayed for four years. So now we are having to spend money to repair the streets, to repair the building. We put three new Indian air units on this building, we've recarved, recarved this building. Uh, we are starting to replace some of this old worn out equipment. Uh, our cash has been built up, but we've got a lot of commitments we need and repairs that need to be made and also a lot of coding for them, as, as Cooper just alluded to.
So, um, I just want to make sure that we are very transparent in, uh, we had to save some money first. We could not fix the street, we could not sign up, we could not do anything, we could buy business cards. And that's, that's accurate. We had to do quotes for coffee, Cooper. We had no money. We had to build up our, our fund balance before we could fix anything. We couldn't because we did not have five hundred thousand dollars to not go anywhere when it talks to about fixing streets. That's a couple of miles and it's gone. Uh, and so we had to save first. We had to repair some things first. Um, the LGC came in and they did a lot, uh, but there was so much more to be done. And I want you to take a moment to talk briefly about, um, the situation with our audits.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, uh, the, of course, you know, we had a previous finance officer that embezzled over half a million dollars. Uh, that finance officer not only was crooked, he was in the car. And the books were in terrible shape. They were in such bad shape that the LGC said you could not audit twenty one, so they waived that requirement. Uh, the town hired Cherry Becker College to do the twenty two audit. But in, after I was hired, I talked to Cherry Becker and they said before, we don't have to audit twenty one, but we have to have good beginning balances for twenty, any balance for twenty one in order to do the twenty two audit. We have completed all of the other corrections to fiscal year twenty one. That financial statement that I did is on the town's website for twenty one. And we have fixed all of the arrows back from twenty one. There were also numerous arrows in the nineteen twenty audit. And you can see a note in that financial statement with the prior period adjustments, and there were many of them. Uh, because the twenty audit was not correct. So first had to correct both of those years. Uh, this week, I have finished the financial statements for fiscal year twenty two. They have been given, submitted to the auditor. Um, the trial balance is done, all of the adjustments for twenty two are done. Uh, as I just said a minute ago, except for the possible adjustment to the sales tax payable to the county for twenty five. All of the adjustments for twenty five have been done. Most of the adjustments for twenty two and twenty three and twenty four have also been completed. So I have submitted to twenty two trial balance and all the work papers to the auditors so that they can do, begin their work on that audit. I will have a PDF for you at the next meeting of the twenty two financial statements. I've finished it, I just, they haven't had time to do the, the PDF and the footnotes.
You have been doing some superhuman work, guys. The LGC waived the audit for twenty one because the numbers were that bad and wouldn't even try to find them. It took, yeah, uh, with the, with the LGC for three years, correct? We hired Mr. Overton and it took him all of this time. He's been working on these audits to find, to get these books right. And he has been working on them diligently to get these books corrected. Um, but again, it was so bad, the LGC threw their hands up on it. But Mr. Overton found those numbers, he got those numbers for us. And now we're able to move forward on solid footing with firm financial data. And that is a true testament to the work that's being done here in the town of Spring Lake. I know it doesn't always show on the outside, but what they're doing internally is beyond tremendous work. Um, so thank you, cause I, I can't even imagine, I've seen, um, our, our budget from nineteen and twenty one and the size of them. Alone, it is intimidating. Um, so this work is.
Takes time, the, the audit reports a hundred and fifty pages each year, so it's not something you can fix overnight. Uh, it takes time.
But trust, by the end of the year, we will be caught up. And again, we, we're behind. Our part will be done to get us caught up on these audits.
The other, the other problem we have is this. The auditors, there are five hun, over five hundred towns in North Carolina. There are a hundred counties, there are a hundred and ten school districts and numerous other little, uh, authorities. So there are well over a thousand audits that have to be done each year instead. There are not enough auditors to go around. And because we're behind, we're not first on their list.
Are there any questions or comments? Um, we will, I'm gonna start with the attorney.
Yeah, just briefly, I was gonna bring it up during my, uh, uh, report as head attorney for the SLPA piece. I know the board is very familiar with it, but since it's been brought up publicly, just wanna make sure that the public's aware of it as well. So I don't have to, I don't have to be disjointed, but that really was a fantastic move by this board to get that squared away. Uh, I know it's confusing, uh, the Spring Lake property acquisitions was technically not the town. Uh, I suppose there was an argument that it was, but it was kind of a Frankenstein's monster nonprofit that was technically not a nonprofit. Uh, but either way, uh, that was a huge looming potential debt out there of three and a half million plus accrued interest.
Now, three and a half million included the accrued interest.
Oh, okay, so three and a half million, it's a lot of money, more than I have. Uh, but, uh, it was, it was big and, uh, the town and Mr. Overton and Mr. Rory worked really hard and the board did and came up with some good ideas and that is a good deal. I know it sounds like a lot to pay four hundred fifty thousand, is that what we paid?
Yeah, but we saved three million.
We saved three million, but then on top of that, in theory, we're gonna retrieve all of that money. Uh, because now we're gonna be able to foreclose upon that land and put it up for a public auction. So I just wanna make sure that the, the public is aware, uh, that even that money is gonna be retrieved. Uh, so it's some financial wizardry, uh, that's gone on and the board and Mr. Overton and Mr. Rory, uh, should pat themselves on the back of that. Like I said, I just didn't want it to be disjointed, so I figured I'd do it for you.
Now, thank you for bringing that up. The other good news, the three and a half million we spent, we bought eighteen tracts of land, separate tracts of land. We closed on the sale of one of those tracts last week. We received seventy five thousand for that tract of land, which will go to pay back part of the town. But we've got, we've sold one. Okay, and if anybody wants to buy the others, we'll take them wherever.
Mayor President, thank you, thank you so much, Mr. Overton. Um, I wanted to be lost that, um, that the accounting firm was here with us, uh, for over two years and we spent one point six million dollars, almost one point seven million dollars, and not one whole audit got done. So, you know, I think people need to understand how much work, Mr., because it was about seven of them. And Mr. Overton, it is just him and two staff members, remember? So I want people to understand the amount of work. And if you ever just wanna be amazed, go, go talk to him at his computer because I don't even know him. But I, I am so appreciative that we have gotten here and I love that too. You missed that today. Commissioner Lachman?
Thank you, ma'am. And it's a shame that this bond isn't here to hear this because, you know, it's one thing to, to dig back last year. It's another thing to dig back two, three, four, five, six, seven years to start to find that front. And when you're talking about your own finances, that's one thing. But when you're dealing with the municipality, you've got all sorts of problems that are, that are tied to that. So in order to track that down, to build this up, to get where we needed to be, we needed to find where our costs went. And so, uh, as it was said, it, it took a lot of digging to get down there. And so, you know, we've got discussions and I appreciate your diligence, your hard work and the residents out there. We were lost to have Mr. Overton because he has straightened things out for our town. So we wouldn't be able to move forward. So I just wanted to tell you, all the digging that was done for multiple years back to nineteen, maybe further back, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Overton. Oh my gosh, you guys don't understand, the, the Spring Lake property acquisition set in a box for two years then with us asking for it for Mr. Overton to finally, you know, start moving towards closure, I think it's nothing to us to know. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item eighty, a discussion regarding the fiscal year twenty six municipal arts allocation. Uh, Commissioner Pusser?
Yeah, let's have a conversation about spending some of that money. So we, the town's awarded forty thousand dollars a year for arts. And, uh, we've been able to bring four murals in the last couple of years uh, as a result of some of that money and, um, money that has been donated for causes and things like that. This past Saturday, we unveiled or dedicated our newest mural at Mendoza Park, which is now titled Beauty of N C. And if you haven't seen it, it's a beautiful mural and, uh, it goes well with the new upgraded playground equipment. We got it at Mendoza Park as well as, uh, the other three murals that we have in town. So it's really a big deal. So, uh, that was largely paid due to grants and as well as, uh, local business needed jeans, uh, antique shop at, uh, Second Street for, uh, making that happen, so we appreciate them. Now, we need to plan what we're gonna do next. And so the committee, the appearance committee, I have three members here tonight. Cynthia, Will, who is the chair, uh, Patrick Morrison and Terry, um, is here. And they are, um, wanting to know what's gonna happen with this next year's money. So, uh, I wanna bring to the board, you know, this idea that I want the committee to figure out what they wanna use that money for. It doesn't have to be a mural, it doesn't have to be this or that. You know, we want input, we want involvement, we want the community to have their say as well. But, um, I want them to know from the jump, this is what the plan is. So what happened last year was, we're gonna use that money to, uh, at least some of that money for the barricades that are right here at the, at the park or the basketball court, the tennis court. And the schools, we got them involved, we got the students involved. Mayor Anthony led that initiative and got them back without having to have any follow up, by the way. So that was great. And so, uh, and so, but that only cost five hundred dollars. You know, so it wasn't that much. Uh, and so the committee held back what they were gonna do because we wanted to use that money for something else. Well, now the committee is feeling like, you know what, I think we've proven ourselves, so trust us a little bit. Am I, is that fair? Yeah. Um, and so anyways, it's a big deal, wanna continue to boost the town and I think they've proved themselves. So if anybody has any ideas, I want you guys to share them. But this was just to kinda get this out there so we can kinda have an action plan. And if we're gonna say, hey, committee, bring something to the table, then, uh, I think we can make that decision too. So, uh, any thoughts from anybody?
Awesome. Um, I, I have several thoughts. Um, I've been thinking about municipal arts application once. Uh, first, I wanna thank the Arts Council for, um, offering this up. It's a four thousand dollar allotment that they give to each municipality, um, to do with whatever, however, use it however they choose as long as it services, uh, the arts and the arts is not just painting or sculptures. It's also music and dancing or any, any form of the arts. And so, um, I'm glad that you brought this topic of discussion up. Um, there's multiple ways that I've been kinda thinking of using it. One, of course, to go back into, um, the arts trail, arts walk, art. Um, I love the fact that our murals are popping up all over the town. I would love to see some go out into the communities where we pop, are in neighborhoods or somewhere, um, where it's accessible without having to come down to downtown Spring Lake. Potentially breaking that four thousand dollars up into mini grants and using it for artists to, or taking submissions from artists of any type to do whatever it is should they want to use it to. Um, kinda like what the mini grants that the Arts Council does and they allow it to supplement maybe a musician who wants to, um, do an EP and they can apply for this grant, talk about their music and use it to that thousand dollars or however it's broken up uh, to support something like that or a reading program, um, something where we go into our schools and we're providing books for the children or just, uh, splitting it up into, to mini grants, uh, to open it up for artist submissions. So those are just some of the things that I had thought about, uh, using them as, as far as allocation for. Did anybody else have anything to add to that? For your job.
Um, to be back off what, uh, Mayor Anthony was saying, I saw this at one of the schools and it was very, very dynamic. It was books and they had like different pages of the books and it was in some type of casing and as the students walked, they could press and the book would light up and read to them. And I know that we're dealing with a lot of literary. And I know that we're dealing with a lot of literacy and I'm getting our children engaged in reading. And I think that made the, I, I actually took pictures so that you can actually see them to see if that was something that we could possibly do. So you could put it down at Mendoza Park, um, you could put it down Main Street. I mean, they're really nice in the way they're centered and it allows the children to be engaged in reading.
Any other ideas?
I don't know what it's called. Um, I think it's where they put the books in the neighborhoods where the kids, they don't have transportation to.
Get to the free library.
Like a free library, maybe that's something that.
There's one in Cannon Farms, right?
Nice story.
So, uh, it's some of the other areas.
And I, I could be, of course, you know, throwing up a post on Facebook and asking the community, yeah, they have it. I love community engagement and we want the, we want your feedback, I mean, because you would be potentially, uh, applying for this, this grant or, um, if we decide to use it that way. So getting some community involvement to see, um, if our citizens have some great ideas. We've got some really smart folks out there, so I'd love to engage them, get their creativity going.
So, great, great ideas. Now, um, what I'd like to propose is a timeline. So maybe at the next meeting, um, have an idea about how long we're gonna, a timeline for a community engagement. You know, so we have next steps. I just, what I don't want to happen is it get February and it's like, hold on, we didn't use any of the money. And we could've been planning, you know, to use it in a specific way or something. And so that's kinda what happened last year until the last minute. And like when we had a plan, we could throw together, but obviously that isn't something we always do. So, um, I, yeah, next month, I'd like to bring something to the table as far as proposing, um, a timeline. You know, so we can get ideas and, uh, also not be handicapped by, uh, so many ideas.
Um, one more, I would like to, and, uh, just to kinda simplify things, uh, I'm not opposed to, and we will have to talk, I believe, to talk with Mr. Rory a bit more about this too. Um, is turning over control of that municipal arts allocation to the appearance committee. Um, that way it's streamlined and you guys handle ideas on how the municipal arts allocation can be used and then bring it back to the board. Um, and we can come with a final decision that'll help kinda streamline.
Yeah.
The, the process. If we could potentially turn that entire grant over to the control of the, uh, appearance committee. And again, if you guys, or we have to talk about that too.
Yep.
Any else?
That gives us enough, uh, any other thoughts from the committee members on that? No? All right, that gives us some work to do.
Awesome.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to our mayor's report, which is very, very brief, I think. So, uh, I have the chance to attend our fast stakeholders meeting. I know transportation has been a hot topic in the town of Spring Lake, um, and across this county for the past few years. However, it's been, uh, quite a task to, I think we got done with that, some work. Um, so we finally, uh, I actually sit on the worker fan, called us the Fayetteville Area Metropolitan Transportation Organization. Um, and we, uh, talk about that transportation within our region. And we were able to, uh, bring fast and to talk about their future plans and put Spring Lake at the table. They were talking about expanding, um, with some substations in North Fayetteville and myself and, um, one of the commissioners from, Commissioners Corolla from Hot Wheels said, hey, what about an outpost in both Hot Wheels and Spring Lake? Um, and so they said, hey, that's a good idea, let's talk about this. Uh, so they were able to take that back to fast, uh, and they called a stakeholders meeting, uh, with several municipalities, several Hot Wheels and Cumberland, or Fayetteville was there as well. Representatives from there and other organizations. And, uh, there is now discussions of how we can bring an outpost to Spring Lake or as close to Spring Lake as possible. Uh, we're discussing interim traffic or transportation, uh, something along the lines of what we had before. So the conversation is finally happening. Um, again, it took us almost three years to have the conversation, so I, I am just being realistic. Don't expect to hear something back overnight. Um, but just know that the discussions are finally happening and we are at the table. Uh, and we are a viable, um, source for them to use for expansion. Um, and that's a really, really good thing, you guys. So, um, hopefully we'll look back, hear back from them now that the dialogue has started. We should hear back, uh, with some sort of updates, uh, in the, in the coming months. And I will keep you updated as soon as I do something. Um, I did want to, uh, congratulate the N W A C P. I've had a chance to bring greetings with him, uh, for their, uh, N W A C P brunch, uh, which is always a, a good thing. They are a huge partner with town of Spring Lake and want to make sure we recognize them. I also wanted to recognize the Spring Lake Middle School Football Team. Not only did they win their first game, they crushed the other team, now they beat the bad. So big shout out to our Raggos. Um, if you know a football player there or the coaches or anybody connected to that school, definitely send them a shout out. Um, and we will, uh, share their schedule if you guys wanna support the newer games. Uh, I also had, uh, one of the, one of the board of, or excuse me, Mayor's Association Board of Directors. And we had our fall meeting, uh, this past week where I had, I got a chance to spend some time with Lieutenant Governor Hunt. Uh, and make sure, and she's aware of what's happening in Spring Lake, uh, and invited her out to come and visit us sometime. Um, we also had a chance to talk to, uh, the Chief of Emergency Management Operations from Asheville. And, uh, he had a lot of information to share and it made me think of Spring Lake because we were underwater in sixteen, we were underwater in eighteen. We had very similar issues to what they're having in Asheville. And right now he's getting national notoriety for what they've done in Asheville. They have broken records with the turnaround town and time and repair time that they've done. And that is, um, it speaks volumes to their Chief of Emergency Management. Well, I invited him out and he's actually, uh, pretty aware of what's happening in Spring Lake. And so, uh, he volunteered him, has his time to come out and talk with our manager, um, our fire chief, uh, to share some of the insights and, uh, operations that they did in Asheville. So, uh, and it's all about preparedness. We don't know if another flood is gonna happen, we don't know if the dam is gonna break. And so the best thing we can do is be prepared. Um, so hopefully we can get him out here soon to talk with, uh, with our staff and we'll see where that goes. And that is, oh wait, Monday, the mayor is, Carly was gonna give me if I didn't say it, on the twenty-fourth. I know where this one is, it's at First Baptist. The restaurant, I'm like, who's gonna be this? Uh, at First Baptist at noon, so please come out and I guarantee you the food is going to be great. So come out and eat with us, fellowship with us, you are more than welcome, uh, to be involved. So that's the twenty-fourth at noon at First Baptist, right down the street on Main Street. And that's all that, Mayor President?
Thank you. Um, so I met with Jennifer Weaver from Clean Connected Communities, uh, to discuss transportation and safety here in our community. Uh, we're a little, we're not, uh, prepared to, uh, submit for the next, this current tenure plan. But, uh, we'll work on some things to submit, uh, for the next, um, the next block now. And I cannot remember what spot name it is again, I always forget. But it's when they're making plans to, uh, change roads or build new roads or highways. And, uh, also on September fifteenth, I met with CGI Digital because he does a video about the town of Spring Lake. And now we're at the point where we're gonna reach out to businesses or churches and give them the opportunity to be on the website, um, under that video. And that's Free Charge from CGI Digital. And, uh, yesterday, Adrian and I both along the decorating design on Church Right in Spring Lake on Bass Road. And we celebrated our hundred and fifty-third anniversary. And, uh, I wanted to thank the mayor for attending, um, but we, uh, we had a good time and we had some good food at the roots. So that's all I have.
We should have something. I don't think we have anything.
Chris, no, I would.
Mayor, you always know I gotta think things. Uh, our suicide awareness motorcycle run we had was held September thirteenth. Uh, it was not well, we raised over five hundred dollars for the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. So that was outstanding. Our impact meeting is tomorrow night here at six, uh, six thirty P M. We're still looking for members that people would like to join, Military Veterans Affairs Advisory Committee, we do have some openings. And Mayor, the Veteran of the Year, it is closed now. So tomorrow night, we will be voting on who will be the Veteran of the Year. It'll be our fourth for Spring Lake. You'll have to wait until November seventh to find out who that, who that person is, but that will be, that will be forthcoming. Commissioner Thompson's gonna take the October fourth cleanup. Uh, Janine and I will be in Korea, our son's gonna be married. So, so we are heading over there and will spend nine days with him and his bride. So Adrian will take the cleanup, so October fourth, Saturday, same place, same time, eight o'clock. Areas will be identified to go out and clean up to continually de-living properties and cleaning Spring Lake. Mayor, you know Christmas is coming, right? So that means the banners are gonna have to come down after Veterans Day. So everybody that's got banners that are on Main Street, they will be coming down shortly after, after Veterans Day. And then the Christmas decorations will be worn out. So, uh, happy days for that, but there will be changes coming on Main Street this coming Saturday at Veterans Park. We're gonna have a, a cleanup. The Woodlands have volunteered to sponsor some vultures and some plants and, and some upgrades to Veterans Park. So there'll be ten wood for ten volunteers to come out and help beautify Veterans Park. Discourse about who they have on our Veterans Day and coming up on November seventh that we have. So, um, looking forward to that. And lastly, April eleventh, long ways off, but it really goes short for all the holidays, we're gonna have another Veterans Service Day. And that's where we're gonna have services over at the recreation center for our military, for our veterans and for our independence of, of military. That we'll be doing on that. So we had it back in twenty twenty-three and this time we're looking to expand it, make it even better. So April eleventh, Saturday, long ways off, but it's short coming up with the, the power. It's all right, Mayor.
Awesome. This year's fine, Brad. Commissioner Pusser's?
All right, so we had our town cleanup this past Saturday that the appearance committee handles. And, uh, so the town is looking better, uh, between town staff and Commissioner Lackman's, uh, monthly cleanups, I mean, those things. So we had a smaller crowd, probably the smallest, uh, that we've had at our town cleanup since we've been in office. And so, uh, and so I, I just assume that everybody, uh, is appreciative how the town is getting cleaned up so much that they just feel like there's no more service needed. But, uh, anyway, so there is still work to be done though. And so, uh, anyway, we appreciate those, uh, committed faithful. And, uh, so, that was redundant, wasn't it? And, uh, anyway, we appreciate those for coming out and the appearance committee, I do wanna just, of course, I can't say enough about them. They're hardworking, uh, volunteers in our community that don't get paid to do, uh, any of that work, but are consistent and make it happen. So, thank you guys very much. We also have a sculpture that has yet to be put up in our roundabout on, uh, on the bridge. So that is still coming, that's already paid for. And, uh, we're just waiting on the proper approval. Anyway, thank you, that's it, Mayor.
And you're going like this, right?
It is a sculpture representing what we've been through the last forty years. Uh, ending it in the future, seriously.
I can't wait to see this sculpture. This is gorgeous.
Okay, so, um, I wanna talk about, um, the P T A that we are, um, trying to activate for Spring Lake Middle School. So I know you're asking, how can we get involved? Very simple, um, we need people to help build our P T A. So we have been actively working with our principal and with, um, some members of the water education scheme. Because this stuff supports our teachers as well as, um, the students at the school. So if we get a P T A, one of the things that we can do is be very supportive of the things at the school, uh, that they don't have. So whether it's for, uh, things for the football team or basketball team or people to support teachers, don't teach appreciation. So we need members of the community that have children at Spring Lake Middle to actively sign up, be part of our parent teacher association. Um, I've seen this at countless schools and it's very beneficial to the school. So please support us. I mean, if you would like to, uh, serve on a committee, like secretary or treasurer or vice president, please contact Rocha in the August and I will be sending the information to our clerks. Uh, but this is very important, we have to support our students, they are the next generation. And this is one of the ways that we can step up and support our schools and our local community.
Mr. Rory?
Uh, Mr. Rory called a thirty slide PowerPoint. No, I'm teasing, I'll, I'll be relatively, uh, relatively brief. Um, but wanted to circle back to the S L P thing very briefly, uh, just because so much of what we do from my standpoint, uh, one, I can't really talk about out here, it's what's done, uh, and then two, it's just into what's done. Done, but, uh, this one, now we actually can talk about it and I, I do think it's important. And of course, I know the board knows about it, but for the public to kinda understand what's going on here. So I won't repeat what I said earlier, but Spring Lake now owns that note and it's a little, uh, funky, uh, the way even that was, uh, done by the original S L P A board. Um, so anyways, we have engaged the Hudson's Law Firm, uh, which just happens to be based here in Cumberland County. But they are probably the premier foreclosure law firm in the state. Uh, and I just spoke with John Mandelac, who's one of the partners there, last week. Um, I would like to say that we had a meeting scheduled where we ran into each other at a restaurant and gave an update. Uh, so, but basically, uh, I said, hey, we've owned this note for a couple of weeks now, where we act. Uh, and they're doing the title work. He said it's been interesting because of the way S L P A acquired that property, which should be cleared, it's not us, it's Spring Lake. Uh, but that title work should be done. The next step will be to foreclose on that property. We didn't buy the property, we bought the note, so we didn't foreclose on it. And then recruit, uh, hopefully not just the four fifty back, but more, you know, that's the goal. Uh, so I do think the public should be aware of, uh, what a great strategy that was. And that was complete teamwork, uh, by the board, uh, the manager, uh, Ms. Hatcher, uh, and of course, Mr. Overton. Uh, so that's S L P A, so that's a big deal. Next up, Plush, I apologize for missing, uh, the, I guess, two weeks ago on the eighth, believe it or not, I was actually doing Spring Lake work. And then Carly texted me and was like, where are you? I was like, where am I, I'm at the office. Uh, but long story short, I was wrapping up the Plush case. Um, so from start to finish, I guess, from when we first started to have problems with Plush, it's been a little over a year, I'm sorry, a little over a year. We filed that case in late November of last year. Uh, the defendants, which is the landlord and then the club operators, had agreed to a consent order in theory as early as May. Uh, but then gave the inquiry details, actually did signatures on, on the dotted line, actually not dotted line, it's over the line. But anyways, uh, it took some time and, um, I've known my opposing attorneys for quite a long time and I gave them a hard time, it looked like burning cats. Long story short, out of that day, that I'm just, last meeting, we were in court because the, uh, trial court was so frustrated with the order not being done. Uh, they were basically like, either get this done, and it wasn't, this wasn't directed to me, by the way, because I had the word. Uh, but this was to my opposing attorneys, get it done, you know, we're just gonna go forward, uh, have a trial. So they reluctantly signed. However, here are the results of public consumption. Uh, Plush was just the doing business as E P A, so that L L C is Heat and Streets, I think it was L L C. Uh, they have agreed to never operate a business in Spring Lake that serves or sells alcohol, uh, for the rest of their lives. Uh, so they can do it anywhere else but here. So, uh, then for Mr. Alabashi, uh, he is the owner of the parcel and building. Uh, he agreed that, just like we discussed in closed session, but now this is literally in a open record at the courthouse, uh, and you can see it online. Uh, he has agreed that he will not lease to anyone that, one, would try to serve alcohol after eleven P M, which is what we all agree upon. Uh, and two, that they will have appropriate security implied. And then three, if he ever wants to revisit that issue, because technically that's forever. And then three, if he ever wants to revisit that issue, because technically that's forever right now, right? Uh, that they will come back to the board and only a majority vote to overturn that. Who knows, maybe in ten years, if the board wants to allow someone to go there, uh, but it would have to be by majority vote. Uh, so that, uh, is finally the end of the Plush saga, uh, on the Twitter side, wrong thing about a month ago, we clearly missed it. Uh, we don't, and should be clear, the town of Spring Lake is open for establishments that want to serve alcohol responsibly. That's it.
All right, well, our manager is against it, so there's no enforcement. And that's how we get it, this meeting is now adjourned.